Mr. Connolly, are they gonna have a fishing rodeo up at Colony Park?
Huh?
Mr. Connolly, are they gonna have a fishing rodeo up Colony this year?
In May.
In May? May 12th, oh.
I left the box with the old name tags over there, sorry.
Can't give it away.
That's a no dog.
No coffee here. Yeah, it's exclusive right there. We always had coffee.
Oh yeah, I know. Actually, I consider for the last few years to mention that we have a bar apart during the winter. I think would actually hold things.
Yes, just that.
Are half our people at home trying to call in somewhere? I've never had this. Well, we used to, I think, now they take their.
Hey, Joe, how are you?
Hey, Josh, are there hard copies of the agenda?
Should be in your mailbox.
Okay, see, I can quite understand that, so I agree with you. So we should print it out.
Excited to do it, so I take that.
Okay, in all seriousness, you should print it out.
Oh, let him take pride in that.
What about copies of the public?
It's not the red line version?
Lieutenant?
I got paper.
I'm fine, thanks, how are you?
Well, that was.
Is anyone else?
You're supposed to get this in your mailbox.
Yeah, okay, you have one. Why don't we have? Rich has them, Rich Bisher has them. Oh. Or get a tab. Okay, I'm sorry, Steve, I'll check with Rich Bisher on it, because he has all the, all the, he has a whole bunch of them, right? Let me ask him. He set them up for everybody. Let me ask him. I mean, it's not that great, but.
Okay, that was thinking.
Do you have a tablet for Steve?
How are you doing?
Three, four, five, six, seven.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I would think so.
All right, we got four of us.
All right, thank you.
Does that go to your city email address?
Okay, thanks. Steve. Steve, Rich is gonna buy a new one. Buy another one. Yeah, we'll get everybody. Or people who want it. Josh, find out who wants a tablet.
I wonder if somebody else does too.
Why do you want it?
We should.
Hello?
I see that. Yeah, so, you know, like the call the regular board involvement meeting for April 12th quarter to divide from.
Here. 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 Alderman Pistadi, Alderman Genetti, Alderman Una, Alderman Yaman, Alderman Rivers, Alderman Lamone.
Here.
President Shuler.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell, Alderman Delibro, eight present, five absent, and one vacancy. Can declare a quorum? Eight present. All right, we have one set of minutes to approve the minutes of the March 8, 2022 meeting.
Motion to approve those five minutes?
Motion to approve by Lamone, seconded by Genetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? All right, I'll look second. Reminder again, a couple quick rules. Identify yourselves, name, and address for the public record. To limit your comments or questions to three minutes or cut to the last. Just reminder that take your statement or question, it's not a Q and A. Anyone from the public who wants to address the board tonight, anyone from the public who should. That's the sort of back row. Name and address for the public record, microphone should be up.
My name is Jeanne Basilka, 33 Davis Street in Ansonia. Almost four years ago, I reached out to the zoning and light office regarding the church in it for me. They muted so loud, the drums, like you could feel the drums through your own body. And always promised, David Blackwell promised that he would look into it, never looked back from him. Then thankfully, COVID hit, so I've had two years of quiet. But right before COVID, I addressed a meeting like this, but for Mayor's Department. And David Blackwell promptly apologized to me, said he dropped the ball, he take care of it, never looked back from him again. On September 20th, 2020, I spoke to Rhonda, who's in charge of the department. She stated David Blackwell is still on medical leave, she'd follow up and get back to me. To this date, since 2020, I've never looked back from her. I spoke to Rich Carlo yesterday, and I didn't even know if he existed, I know now. And the city has a very good employee there, he looked into it, he got an answer, he's working on it. In 24 hours, there's one person who is making something happen versus four years. So a few months back, I called Zoney, I spoke to Kelly, the clerk, and asked about the church if there was, you know, had heard from Rhonda and there had been a follow-up. She basically told me that the church has been there a long time, I need to accept the noise. Basically, my problem is getting used to it, in her words. I don't think a clerk should tell a citizen of Ansonia who pays taxes and invested their life savings to fix up property to unify the neighborhood. On the same phone call, I asked her about chickens. She said, anyone in Ansonia can have chickens, you just have to accept it, there's nothing to do about it. It was my neighbor's tenant, who has a piece of property about 50 feet by 10 feet, and two chickens. And so basically, knowing from zoning of light has ever helped me in four years, it's like a dead end. So chickens started coming into my yard, and I have a very large dog, I didn't come back to it. And one I knew that was with the dog chasing the chickens. I didn't know if she was gonna kill the chicken, or the chicken had been hurt, the dog opened her eye or something. And it was just terrible, but, um, so they're now caged. And this Sunday, I called Jean from Animal Control, and it was her day off, and she kind of told me, you know, tried to chase them away and that. And right now, also, I've been told that there's bird flu with chickens now. And anyways, that is kind of being addressed as well. But my concern there is Animal Control told me that they don't have the support of zoning of light, of Ansonia, that helps them. And to end it, I just wanted to say that when she told me my problem with the chickens, I went to the internet, and I found that in 2003, the zoning board voted unanimously that for people to have chickens in Ansonia, they have to have three acres. And then a Milford Superior Court Judge, Gerald Esposito, ruled in favor of the zoning board, and cleared the way for Ansonia to get rid of chickens. But in the meantime, one of the chickens died, I think they gave up the fight, but City of Ansonia won. If I could find this, I think the people that work in zoning should have records of this. Not pretend that they don't know what's going on, not service us, it's horrible. But I'm gonna end with, I think, Rich Carlo is a great addition to zoning, or I don't know if it's light or zoning. He is a bright, intelligent man, and I cannot, I am so grateful, I'm sorry, I'm nervous and shaking, but I am so grateful that after four years, no one actually gave a damn about us.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for addressing us and looking for that.
Thank you for listening to me, thank you for what you do, because you know what? Us citizens, and probably other politicians in this state, we can't accomplish anything without people like you doing the jobs.
Anyone else from the public who should address the board? Back and then front, you have your hand up before you go. Name and address? No, it's back, front, it's back, in this case, go in front.
Hey, we're with Jan, I want to say one thing, she's very good job, you can do everything. She just coming in, when you move. Make sure.
We'll pass, we'll pass on.
That'll go to the front row.
Lost control already?
Yeah.
I'm Chris from O'Carroll, I live at 22 Silver Hill Road in Ansonia. And I'm here again, swinging away from my parking space that I want to have next to my stairs. On the most dangerous turn in the road, I've got two petitions from the neighborhood that say, that's a good idea, we really want you to do it. There's 135 signatures on one, there's 110 on the other. And I couldn't understand why the old men, whatever vote me down. And now here, this is the first time I'm talking to you, this is the first time we're actually meeting. It's the first time I'm saying something besides, please vote for my 824. And going through my notes, and what I was told, I got little pieces from people, a lot of people believed that you were lied to. And I'm looking at what kind of lies. Oh, one is that I went around to the neighborhood telling people it was for a handicap person, which I never did. I never said that, I said, I'm the guy building the zone wall, I want to put a parking space next to my stairs. I even put it in a second petition, gave no way to Mr. O'Carroll or Ms. Lee to say this petition was for someone with a handicap. And what I'm looking at is that, yeah, you all have been lied to. And apparently, what it is, is my neighbor, who really doesn't have any more interest than aggravating me. And if you go by and you look, you'll see that they transplanted bushes in front of a sign that I put out there, after they put a flag up for me to see as soon as I come out my front door. They don't care about that area. It's like, it's like 85 or 90 feet away from their front door. Alls that they care about is harassing me. And it seems that the lies have been put through PNC, primarily to Blackwell, because he incited the prior neighbors into believing, as well as this set of neighbors, that they own the town land. And that they could tell me I can't park there, and they could do whatever they want. So I've been subject to no trespassing signs and piles of rocks, where I can't go and park right in front of my stairs to offload my groceries, with the police getting home on me, because of the lies that Blackwell told these neighbors. You know, it's just aggravated. People were saying that I told them that this over here is all in front of my property, which it's not. Which is what I believe was the purpose of the 824 to begin with. You know, and I just don't understand this. The people driving by don't understand this, the people who stop and see me working over there, they're scratching their heads. They can't understand why PNC is being such a problem with this, or why the old men aren't voting for it. Is that my three minutes?
Yeah, sure, I just want to bounce this to City staff. I know that it was mentioned maybe two months ago, that they were working on something?
Well, we contacted Nuggetuck Valley Council of Governments and spoke with Rick Dunn. And Rick Dunn said, I will work to see if we can reclassify your road as an arterial road. And what that means is, if it becomes an arterial road, instead of a, you know, a secondary road, it will be eligible for federal and state funds. And we've gotten a lot of, we're successful in getting a lot of road improvement funds to make roads safer through this lot set program, which an arterial road would qualify for. So I'm still waiting for an answer on that, and it does take a little bit, but hopefully, the mayor wants to correct that. He knows it's a dangerous road, and.
I am aware of that.
Okay.
I do agree with it, and I'm all for it. But still, as soon as you put somebody from PNC in there, the people that have been actually telling lies to me as well, claiming that I had to go and move dirt that I dumped across the street in the empty lot by the next day, which would be like a huge financial burden. And I told, I told Corinne right out, you're lying. And so what I did, since I do know people over there, I got a permission slip to dump the dirt over there. So I'm looking at all this, and it's like really one-sided, and it's nothing that I've said against it. I've always said, I think we need the 824, because it's in this very tip, very last part, away from their door by about 80 feet, little piece of land that the town owns, not taking the neighbor's land. And with the funds from the state, there's still no guarantee that I'm gonna have a place to park. That's why I'm out here slugging away again for a 824, so I can have a parking space there. I'm glad we built something temporary, something that can be taken down later, whenever the state does what they want to do for the town. You know, at my expense. I always liked that from the beginning, I'll do it at my expense, and I'll do it to work. You know, so it's still beyond me, and a lot of the neighbors are saying, what the hell is really going on? You know, and I think I'll go over my three minutes. Thank you.
You're gonna less passionate in person than online, the better looking. All right, anyone else in the public who should speak? Yes, name and address for the public record.
Goodie, my name is Joseph Aruta, I live on 3 Pleasant View Terrace.
Can you call your ID?
Aruta, A-R-R-U-T-A. It's hard to explain what we, me, my family, the neighbors, are dealing with for the last five, five and a half, six, going on six years. My neighbor on 4 Cenit View Terrace, which is a cul-de-sac, has no regret for the neighbors. He refuses to follow any rules. I'll start with the working on cars. It's been five, like I said, five, six years of him working on cars, all kinds of cars. Rents his engine at all hours. Tow trucks in and out of there, all hours. And come home distracted in the cul-de-sac. In his driveway now, this is, like I said, every day, weekends, up to the point now that, you know, my health. I don't even want to come home anymore after work, I dread the weekends. And I'm already talking to the mayor, the police, Rhonda downstairs, and complained, and I just want to thank the mayor. He's been a gentleman about this, the police, thank you very much, they've been trying to do the most they can, and I call almost every night. I understand people, you know, have the right to work on their vehicles. Once in a while, this goes beyond that. It's constant. Like I said, coming home, dread, I dread it. I can't even sit on my deck in the summertime. Enjoy my family, my friends, by the poolside. What happened on the car, zooming up and down, and maybe he owns two race cars still. How you doing? And like I said, it's two, three in the morning, jumping off cars back and forth. Just changing plates, unregistered cars, so he's using that cul-de-sac as a, you know, a mechanical shop up there. Like I said, I've been calling, reporting, having meetings with the, for years. I have pictures, as I was told to do videos, which I gave to the Chief of Police Williams. Dump drive of all the evidence that I have. Me and my wife even considered selling our home, the home where my girls were born, raised in Ansonia. It's not gonna happen, I'm not holding it, there's so many memories there. I don't know where to go here from here, you know, it's just, it's living hell up there, it really is. Now, you know, summertime coming, like I said, I don't even want to go outside. I don't want to go outside, there's, you know, something's gonna happen there. Once again, my family's lived there for 26 years. Our daughters grew up in that cul-de-sac, playing there, out in a chemical shop. I just don't know how this is allowed in residential. I didn't move into a mechanical shop area, you know, I didn't move there, they came to me. And I know, I know they've gotten a couple tickets here and there, but they don't care. But my understanding, he threatened my life once, I got elderly neighbors there that are scared. They are, so they talked to me about it, and that's why I'm here, and like I said. The mayor tell you I met him three years ago, like I said, thank you, mayor, he's giving me his personal number. I keep calling this gentleman at two in the morning, he'll get back to me, anytime. I just called him recently, I'm Sunday, I come home from church, there they are, working in the cul-de-sac. And like I said, I know everybody's got the right to work in the driveway, change a tire, your daughter's car comes in, but this is beyond that. Beyond that, please, I'm begging you guys, please do something, that's why, please. I'll move from here, as I said, why should I move? It's a beautiful neighborhood, beautiful neighborhood, let's keep it that way, but he doesn't care. From my understanding, he went downstairs to Rhonda, and this is recently, he just told her, I'm not following anybody's rules, and walked out. So, thank you. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? So these vehicles he's working on, are they his own, or?
Some of them are, some of them are their own, but that's two race cars there. So it's constant, so they take the race cars, they load them up on the trailers, tow trucks, and they usually leave around 10 o'clock. So in between getting these monster, monster cars, mufflers, that, it'll shake their house. And they'll take off two, three in the morning, they gotta take them off again. I call the next morning, it's up out of cul-de-sac, that's a public street there. And it's just sitting there, cops have been doing their job, they've been going up there, telling them to move it, and they don't, like I said. You know, the cars that he's got over there, and any given weekend, there's five, six of them up there. There's buddies and stuff like that, maybe, it's just, until I go to work, until I go home. You know, like I said, it's, I can't even open my windows. So like I said, you know, I just believe that, you know, people have a right to work on a car, absolutely. But like I said, this is beyond, beyond. And I have a little clip, if you guys want to listen to this rocket ship that I air. Do you guys want to listen to it? I mean, do I have time to listen? I mean, it's just, I mean, you know what I mean, it's constant. If you have time, let me show you. Just one, thank you, I just want you guys to realize what I'm, you know what I mean?
Does the chief have this clip yet? Does the chief have this clip yet that you have?
Uh, yeah, I gave him the thumb drive, and like I said, I've talked to John in there so many times, like I said, it's five years of this stuff here, you know what I mean? These mufflers are aftermarket mufflers, you know, there's some way that we can, because I read the flight, you know, a little bit, a look into it. They're supposed to be a despot, I don't have, maybe I'll pay for the damn thing, you know? I mean, you know what I mean, it's just, you know, like I said, I don't know what to do here. But yeah, he has a thumb drive, and like I said, I even talked to the mayor, the chief, and he's, I have called numerous times. But this is what I'm dealing with here. Two, three in the morning, every day, Sunday after church. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm Bob Carey, this is our fourth little business, like Joe is a better on going than. My next question is, what is it dealing with? What is it, is it an ordinance? Are you allowed to work as a commercial entity in a residential area? These people are clearly not working on their family car. These are those little, you guys see, you hear these cars running up and down, you hear these all the time. These are aftermarket race cars that are taken down from New York to be raised. They're like these eight, most of the neighbors, she couldn't make it tonight because she has church, she has fire practice over the church. She woke up at three o'clock in the morning, because that's when they bring these cars back from the city.
And again, this is the, it's the random, and random. I lived up there forty-six years. I think I've had a tow truck in my house for once. This is, you know, three, four times a week. I mean, you know, that's, how many times have they had a tow truck in their house? And most of the times, maybe it don't need it. You know? So clearly, the question I have is, what's the deal? Is it, do we need an ordinance? These guys don't care, if they can get a ticket for a hundred bucks, they'll, they'll probably gambling thousands of dollars down the road.
They have to clearly be told this is not acceptable, you cannot, and again, is it a commercial establishment? Is the money being taxed? No, but I'm sure favors are, I'm sure it's a bar system, if there's no money being, you know, you work in my car, help me do this. If you got ten guys up there a weekend, they're not working on, you know, the owner's car. They're working on their own cars or the friend's cars. They're working on their own cars or their friend's cars. These guys all can't have a bridgeport. You guys don't have a bridgeport, you can't move, there's no tronies down there. So this is, let's bring the guards, I think we got a nice cul-de-sac, you know, nobody says anything, you know, but now people just want to say something. So that's it. Frustration, but again, it's gotta be a solution, because this is really... Just come up there, just come. It's ridiculous. Okay, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak today?
I'm Matthew Down, 40 West Street, Ansonia, Connecticut. Good evening, everyone. I'm here again, another month in a row, to ask what exactly is going on with Ansonia's ARPA funds? And why we're not doing something similar like our neighboring towns and cities are doing. Like having an open public discussion on how the money should be spent, like in Seymour, or at the very least, like in Derby, requiring the board of Alderman's approval prior to spending it. Secondly, I would like to ask not just the mayor and his board, but all city officials to do more than just blame the state and promise cameras when it comes to the rising violent crime rate in Ansonia. I have more to say, I have more to say for this, but first, I would like to take a moment of my time to have a moment of silence for the young life we just lost to such violence a few hundred yards from where I stand. Now, blaming the state does nothing, all right? Literally, nothing. They're not Ansonia, we're Ansonia. Secondly, the cameras are like putting a Band-Aid on a shotgun. I have worked in retail for almost a decade now. We have closed caption cameras, we have them in our society for decades now. What have they done to stop shoplifting? New Haven has had closed caption cameras for a while now. What has that done to stop the violence in New Haven? New York City, once again, same thing. And what has that actually done to prevent any further violence from happening? Nothing. Real equitable solutions must be found by all of us here in Ansonia, or I fear things will only get worse as they are right now. If there's any actual answers to my questions of the ARPA funds or what's going on right now with our, you know, rising crime rates, feel free to contact me at MatthewDown192@yahoob.com. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board tonight? Anyone else in the board?
Can I just ask the poll question? Because I may, I just, I'll double click this here. Is there gonna be a resolution? I mean, well, how do you guys proceed? Because we just said...
So, Mr. President, I want to say that, you know, the mayor's office has looked at this, and I've looked at it as well. I agree. This appears to be an illegal tuning shop that needs to be shut down. So the police commenced another phase of their investigation, and Lieutenant Will will give an update in his section tonight, because I do want the board of Alderman to be filled on, filled in on what's going on. But to the extent that any department of the city does not enforce rules and regulations with respect to noise, with respect to illegal shops, with respect to chickens, the answer is, that department official will be terminated. And I have to make it clear, if any resident of the city of Ansonia is not getting action from an employee, please contact the mayor, contact me through the mayor, or directly, contact Sheila O'Malley, who's at the front end of City Hall in Economic Development, or President John Schuer, who is extremely responsive and prompt with interactions with all residents. Rules have to be followed. What we're hearing is obviously a shame, a disgrace, and has to be stopped.
That's the answer I wanted to hear. I appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, I'll listen to your procedure.
And I'm sorry that you're living with that.
That's okay. Joseph, don't try that. You're not allowed to come without him. Anyone else from the public who wishes to address the board? 30 seconds. Okay, on your issue?
Can I just speak for another 30 seconds?
Is this on your issue? Is this on the issue you brought up before?
Yeah.
The road, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, well, I just want to say, like, my neighbor's Chris from the RSK 22 Silverhill Road, my phone number is 203-2401-9066. If any of you have any questions about what the parameters in the work are, about what you had actually approved before, please call me, stop by. I work in construction, my work is a little spotty, so there's a good chance I'll be there. I can show you exactly what it is that, you know, my intentions are. Also, you can stop by and see exactly what they have done to the area. It looks like a bomb went off in the last week. Thank you.
Anyone else? Probably not follow-up comments. Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Anyone from the public? Third final follow-up. All right. Go in, session number 18. I'll move on to public official session, Mayor Sessions.
Good evening, President Schuer. Members of all of our residents in the great city of Ansonia. I'd like to take a moment of silence to pray for the people involved in the Brooklyn, New York subway attack, and also for the people of Ukraine. Thank you. I know this board, along with the Board of Apportionment and Taxation, is getting to work on the budget that I presented. I want to emphasize some of the highlights. I am once again proposing a budget that does not increase the tax rate. I want to repeat the message and be clear that I will veto any final budget proposal that raises Ansonia's tax rate. I would also like to highlight a truly remarkable fact, a remarkable fact. You will find that this year's proposed budget represents $1 million less in city spending than the budget that I was passed immediately prior to my first term in 2013, when I took office. Our grant list has risen to over $1 billion since fiscal year 2013. An 18.3% increase attributes to pro-business approach to economic development and appreciating property values. Workers' compensation costs totaling over $1 million per year in fiscal year 2013 have been sliced in half, thanks to a proactive legal concept. Ansonia's tax collection, thank you. Ansonia's tax collection rate remains strong at 98% per year, and our new finance leadership is establishing long-term solutions that will ensure years of fiscal stability. I am especially proud that I have been able to fully fund our public safety and EMS departments, and the Board of Education. I want to thank Kirk Miller and the finance team, and all our departments, for helping to craft a budget that does not compromise city services and does not put any more of a burden on our taxpayers. I want to ask for this board's support as you do your due diligence with my budget proposal. There is a lot happening on Main Street, as usual. The former ATP and Palmer buildings are being renovated and set for a spring opening and ribbon cutting. I had an honor of attending a soft opening for Uptown, formerly Craig, along with my staff, Alderman Schuer, and the food was very good and exciting, and I'm sure everyone is going to love Libby's new creation. I also had a chance, along with Alderman Schuer and Alderman Cassetti, to ride the new scooters coming to Ansonia at the end of this month. It was a lot of fun, and I am hoping our residents will take advantage of them. Ansonia will be the first location in Connecticut for the Bird Company scooters. We will have a new ice cream store called Sweet Eats located at 156 Main Street, which will be operating, which will be opening up, and will also feature coffee and pastries. Demolition is being slated for next month for the former Pandell property, that's the SHW down the street. We will finally clear a path towards redevelopment that already includes a proposed fuel cell operation and a possible steel manufacturer. We are all anxious to see this site return to productive reuse. Now, I would like to take a minute to congratulate the Assumption Lady Chargers, who are the 2022 Girls' varsity basketball league champions. Congratulations to them. I want to remind you of a few events coming up. As always, we want to remind you, our great partners at Griffin Hospital will continue to hold their vaccination clinics. Please join us Saturday, April 16th, for Earth Day Cleanup, beginning at the Armory from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's this Saturday. The National Day of Prayer will be Thursday, May 5th, at 5:30, right out here in Veterans Park. There is so much happening downtown, and last week I had an opportunity to walk down Main Street with a good friend of mine. Oh, is he here? He's here. Seriously. How are you, buddy? These guys are a little for treats.
Everybody.
You got people in the crowd, so don't waste it. Seriously, but seriously, I want to welcome everybody back to the Aldermanic Chambers, and I want you to enjoy some Easter candy courtesy of our Easter Bunny, to commemorate our first meeting in two years. And please, join us, thank you, join us for Easter candy giveaway this Saturday, April 16th, on the stairs at City Hall, from 4:30 to 5:30, Saturday afternoon. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Good job with the budget there.
Thank you.
All right, I think this is ridiculous, as we've arrived.
How do you follow up the Easter Bunny?
We can't. We can't follow that act.
Can't do it.
I want to point out, this was reported in the paper, but thanks to this board's efforts, and of course, the efforts of the Krajerski family, and Mr. Walter Krajerski, who's here in the audience, the city has signed a lease for the Ansonia Opera House with the mission of working with the owner and our residents to revitalize and possibly, hopefully, restore that site for the benefit of the city. As we discussed many times, this is not an overnight project. There are many challenges. At the very least, the city is hoping to work with the owner to do an exterior restoration that will work to the benefit of not only the building, but also to our downtown. But of course, where we'd all like to go is the rehabilitation of the interior, which is the oldest opera house, oldest standing opera house in the state of Connecticut. And, you know, I want to thank this board for believing in the project to get us to this point, but I also really want to recognize, and really have a round of applause for Mr. Walter Krajerski, who through his determination over decades, defended this property and allowed us to get to this point in history where we could even think about preserving it. Tonight, I'm going to ask that the Board of Alderman, under New Business, formally vote to create the Opera House Committee pursuant to the lease agreement, and then at the next meeting, there will be appointments to that committee that will start to meet regarding the assessment, which is actually ongoing. Sheila has sent some engineers down to take a preliminary look at the interior and the external situation of the facility, and of course, thinking about, you know, what steps will be next in the process. So more on that next month, but please add that to your agenda under New Business tonight to create the Opera House Committee. Secondly, under Executive Session, we have two contracts for discussion. One is the long-running negotiation of the supervisors' unit. This is, of course, the first ever negotiation of the supervisors' unit. The history, for those not involved, is that there is one clerical unit in the past that encompassed both supervisors and the employees they manage. Mayor Cassetti's administration made a big effort to split that into two groups, one for supervisors, one for clerks, and the negotiation of that supervisors' contract is now complete and up for review and approval tonight. Also, we have the smallest unit in the city, which is the Nature Center Rangers, and we have completed after one and a half days preliminary terms for approval by this board, and we're going to talk about both of those tonight. But I would like to thank UPSU, the employees of UPSU, both at the Nature Center and the supervisors across the city, for working with the city through this process, to come to terms that are really a win-win for both the residents, taxpayers, and employees. News for Olson Drive, we are requesting approval from the Board of Alderman to fund the purchase of Olson Drive from the Housing Authority. I've given a lot of updates on this in the past, but finally, we are ready for a closing. It will take simply a virtual closing, we're targeting next week, probably Monday or Tuesday, but we do need to put in place the funds to pay for the site. And once we get approval from this board, we will be going to vote later this week to complete the process. Finally, you have up for discussion in Executive Session, a potential lease arrangement, which is highly recommended by the mayor's office, with Valley Save Our Youth, great organization that has been provided funding to conduct a variety of youth enhancement activities, programming. We're very excited to work with Leonard Duffus and that organization, and we're going to be talking about for the first time some of the details of that lease agreement, which would see them occupying the bottom floor of 4, Fourth Street, which otherwise known as the Ansonia Community Action Center. And so that's all I have for tonight, unless there are any... I'd like to also congratulate the mayor and the Easter Bunny for their starring role in our last city video, and of course, encourage anyone to come and help out with the candy distribution from 4:30 to 5:30 Saturday night. We're hoping to get a lot of Ansonia kids showing up to that.
Any questions for Corporation members from the Alderman?
Thank you, President Schuer, members of the Board of Alderman. We're not, I guess we're not standing here to speak now, this is great, very casual. But you did hear the mayor talk about demolition. Demolition specs are currently being reviewed by DECD. Not sure how long that will take, but once those are reviewed and approved, Building 11 is going to be the first building that we're going to demolish on 35 North Main Street. You'll hear me talk about Building 8, 9, 10, 11A, and 12. 12 is the only building that we're going to salvage, because it's structurally sound and looks like it would make a good home for several manufacturers that are interested in that building. So again, this is going to be Building 11, and that's the one that has a partial roof collapse and sort of sits in the middle of the property. And once that building is taken down, then we can get to the other buildings. So it's sort of a central building. We've applied for a federal grant for an access road into the SHW site, and eventually into the Ansonia copper and brass site, and that access road will hopefully lead to the extrusion mill once it's renovated. So we're going to try to open up that, those parcels, and begin the redevelopment process, long-awaited redevelopment process. We're working on the design, that's ongoing, for Franklin Street and the sidewalk projects, and you did see photos of the design for the splash pad, equipments being ordered as we speak, and you'll see, you'll see the necessary prep work starting soon for that project. John talked to you about the opera house. We did have a couple of, thanks to Walt and Anthony and the guys, Pat and everyone, Joey, we, yep, we did have a couple of engineers and architects. Take a look, a lot of, a lot of engineers and architects are interested in that, in that facility. A lot of, a lot of engineers and architects are interested in that, in that facility, and are excited about the prospects of renovating it. And did speak to SHPO, they encouraged us to move forward with an application for a feasibility study, or a needs, excuse me, a needs assessment. So that's the first step. We'll get grant money for that, and then take a look at what the Opera House actually needs. What's the first step? What do we need to address? And we'll go, you know, we'll go incrementally seeking and securing, hopefully securing grant funds to help with that Opera House renovation. State Street's on the agenda a little bit further up. We finally did get DOT authorization for that project, and I wanted to talk to you about a bid waiver for the engineers who have already sort of knee-deep in the project already, having done rewrites and surveys, et cetera. So I'll be asking for your approval for a bid waiver. That's a $1.4 million road rehabilitation project, which, you know, I don't, I don't, I turn to the mayor for, you know, as to whether or not that can be started this season, but I don't, I don't know with all the approvals necessary. So that's, I think that's it for now. You'll see an RFQ going out for the CMAC grant that we were awarded for, I think it's $410,000, to do some improvements around the train station in the West Main Street area. So we'll be putting out a request for qualifications for engineers and contractors, et cetera.
Any questions for the Aldermen?
Oh, boy. Oh, good.
Go first.
Age before duty.
Oh, then Rivers, you're up.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to talk to you a little more about a constituent that I have in the audience, a beautiful constituent about the two trees.
Yes.
That she wants to plant.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Alderman Rivers. Yes, I did speak with Belinda, and she had indicated that there were, prior to some storms and et cetera, there were two trees on Peck, where the former Peck Lane's, Peck School was. And with Alderman Rivers' request and working through Belinda, we're going to, we're going to try to get PW to put, to replace those two trees. So appreciate your bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
I hope you have more questions.
That was the beauty of you.
Yes.
Building 11 for the Deville, do you have a kind of an estimate on when it may occur?
I think right now, as I said, just today, we sent the specs, all the specs and the bid documents to DECD. They said they, they said they thought they could turn it around by next week. So then we'll put it out to bid, that's a, for our charter, I think it's a 10-day minimum, but I'd probably put it out for a little bit longer than that, according to whatever the state guidelines are. We'll put it out, and then, and then hopefully demolition to occur sometime in May, June.
Oh, that's pretty quick. And then, Building 12, you said was salvageable and potentially rentable. Do we have, does 11 have to come down before we can do that?
It doesn't necessarily have to come down before you do that, and there, there's an interested manufacturer who, we may present that proposal to this board, who would like to lease, to lease that building, and is not the least bit concerned about the demolition occurring and what, what sequence. So it's kind of, you know, it's an interesting proposal, that again, we'll be talking to you guys about.
Is there cleanup in 12?
There's cleanup in 12, yep.
Is that going to be kind of the city's expense, or the?
Nope.
Let's see.
Let's see. We did a lot of the, we did a lot of the cleaning of the pipes in there, got a lot of the, you know, wrapped the pipes and removed a lot of contaminated material, but they're still in the windows and the roof replacement.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Do you think I could get, even an 8x11 drawing of Buildings 11, 12, 13, 380?
Yeah, I do have a diagram.
Propose road.
Yep, I should have brought it with me, but yes, I have, I have that, and I can send it.
It seems like we talk about a Building 12, a Building 13.
Yeah, it has no relevance, right.
You don't know where those are?
No.
I thought he was going to ask for a photo over, Josh.
What's that?
I thought he was going to ask for a photo over, instead of 8x11.
I don't know why he would ask for that.
I already asked Bob, she doesn't sign him.
Yes, sir.
What is the, you know, obviously, I, my neighbors, just being in the second ward, are very interested in the State Street project, people are very excited about it.
Yep.
Second Ward is in dire need of infrastructure.
Definitely.
Repair, and, you know, I think everyone feels this is going to be a wonderful step forward. Having said that, what is the reason for the waiver of the engineering contract?
Yep. So I, you should have had a letter in your packet, but I don't, I didn't submit one. But what we did, when we put the...
You're referring to something under Community Phase 1?
Correct, yeah.
You want me to?
I can explain it out.
Okay. So what you do for a lots of application is you submit this application, which I do some of it, but the rest of it requires actual engineering. So someone has to survey it, go out and figure out the quantities, what the dollar amounts attached to those quantities are, and I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I can't do that part of the application. So this particular engineering firm did go out, did all the specking, surveying, and put together the rest of the application for... And when you submit your pre-application, it goes through three levels of review. So one at the COG, an independent engineering firm reviews your application, and you're resubmitting and you're correcting. So they have been, this has been ongoing for probably about a year. And then DOT submits its concerns, and you address, you have to address all of those concerns before they'll release the money.
Have they been paid for that work?
They have not been paid for that work.
I just, I don't understand why you would waive an engineering contract. I understand the work that you have to do.
For the design, for the design.
For the design phase, right?
Well, they're halfway through the, it's actually partially designed.
Has this, has this occurred before?
Yes. Yep. Usually you'll have a city engineer perform those services.
And you did not in this case.
We have a, we have a civil engineer, we don't have a, we didn't have the resources or the manpower to do this type of work.
I'm just a little concerned about the prospect, like a person doing this essentially on a volunteer basis.
Yep.
With the premise of them getting the contract, because the contract is not going to be there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was prefaced on them getting any contract.
I think instead of being, definitely you just worded, I think it's more, the work is partially done already, so you want to go back out to bid, like reinvent the wheel for the different, essentially different part of it.
Well, this isn't unique to this particular job, I mean, this is a normal procedure.
So, so essentially, if we put this out to bid, all the work that the other, that the other guy has, has already done, would have to be done all over again, because a new person come in, they're not going to use his work, right?
Are you going to start from scratch? But I, you know, I may have misspoke, I believe we did pay them for some hours' work on this application. So off the check.
I mean, I think, I think that would be a different story.
Yeah. I think so, because it was under the threshold.
If it was a volunteer situation in anticipation of bidding, so you could get the contract, I think the contract should have been bid in the first place.
I don't, I don't, I don't think they would object to a, to a bidding process, and, and we can put it out to bid, doesn't matter, it's just more time, and, and actually, if they're not selected, it is reinventing the wheel.
A part of the issue is that if it goes out to bid, likely, you know, price is a big part of any bid response, but we also know that certain vendors can bring more to the table than others, and I think Sheila's concern is here, that vendor would obviously bring a lot of insight to the table that the other vendors simply would not have, and thereby this just being a more efficient, effective way to move forward. But I do think it is important, you know, vendors do have to understand that there's no shortcuts getting a project, but just in certain circumstances, it's just inefficient and ineffective to have to go through that process if it's not going to lead to any better result for the city than the vendor we already have.
And the funding source for this state fund?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. Evening to the members of the board and the city officials. Chief Williams sends his regards, he is a little under the weather, so he has to step in for him. I will address senior view and pleasant view. About two months ago, we met with Mr. Irvin. We immediately began our investigation, we have issued some enforcement up there for the noise and different things. We then entered into a joint with zoning enforcement, and we've also contacted the State Department of Motor Vehicles. They are really done. They're the people we go to, so they've given us some insight, we have some, a plan in place to move forward. I know zoning has issued some cease and desists, so we're kind of moving on a dual track, a civil and a criminal track. So that's where we are with that, and we will continue to push that forward.
So when the, you know, when we reach that end, when we reach that end with cease and desists, with, from the building department, and even on the criminal end, you know, at some point when there's a dead end reached, to bring it to the next level, you have to work with, you know, at that next level, the state attorney's office or the local prosecutor to be able to get action. So I believe that's where we are right now, is figuring out, you know, the best ways to bring, you know, which, which, you know, which processes to that, to that final end. And we do have a situation where it looks like this individual does not want to comply. You know, they did have an interaction, I understand to be hostile with the building department, whereby they received the cease and desists, and they decided they're going to tell us they're not going to comply, and that, of course, doesn't mean we stop, but that does mean we need to now start working with our local prosecutor and our, you know, our local law enforcement to, to kind of escalate things to the next level.
You have more? I do. Okay. Just briefly, manpower-wise, we have hired two military police officers, which will allow us to train them at about half the time it takes for an uncertified officer, they're currently doing that, and we anticipate them in the next four to five months to be out on the street. We have two uncertified candidates that will be entering the New Britain Police Academy within the next two to three weeks, but that academy process is usually a seven-month process with another four-month field training, so we continue to look to hire the open slots that we have. Unfortunately, last week, as most of you know, last Tuesday, we had a homicide in town. Our detective bureau, our patrol division, has been working pretty much around the clock. They've made a tremendous amount of headway, we have a lot of good evidence, some strong leads, and we're hoping to come to a successful conclusion on that case. Other than that, tonight, we have a letter before you requesting permission to dispose of the 2013 Ford Explorer. That vehicle began its life in our patrol division, and was transitioned over to our animal patrol officer, and has pretty much run its course, right, how the condition of the car makes it higher value for us to scrap it. So that's what the chief is requesting, permission to dispose of the 2013 Ford Explorer. Any questions? There may be some more.
As far as the race cars, I, I need to go to the attorney also. Why, it seems to me that this, these people are obstructing that cul-de-sac to the people who are adjacent to it.
We have looked at it, and we have not found that to be the case. The repair work is different than the obstruction, so we're, we're looking at every avenue.
I find that hard to believe. I'm not, I'm just, I can't, you know...
I can explain to you, that's how I can explain it to you, it's not obstructing the people from coming, knowing, they are doing work there. At times, it's been a noise issue. Tow trucks go up there because the cars that the man owns that races are not registered, so he has to tow them back and forth to wherever it is he races them, so that's kind of where that situation is.
Very frustrating.
It's extremely frustrating for the residents, and that's why we began this course of action, and we're trying to do it on two different tracks, so we can get to a resolution as quickly as possible.
I mean, you guys got a lot of projects going on all at the same time, and you're doing very well.
It's part of what we do, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Resident parking signs from in the area of the hospital.
Yes.
That ordinance was passed four years ago.
Yes.
Old parking signs have been put up, H3, Madison Street, there's still a lot of signs that have never been erected. And the other thing that I would like to know is, how many residents actually apply to this permit?
I can get that answer from our records clerk.
Oh, I don't think you do.
Off the top of my head, I do not know. I can tell you that the sign issue, there was an issue with getting the posts, there was some backorder on that post, we're working with Public Works. Now that the weather's starting to clear up, it's going to be easier for them to set new signs, now that the ground is thawed out of it, so that project is... No, no, but I will, I will find out, and we, the chief or myself will get back to you on that.
I also have another request in the area of the hospital. Between the main entrance of that hospital and the emergency room, where that trailer has been parked, you know, on several different occasions.
Yes.
They need to have old parking signs there, because people, they, they're really paying attention to the, to the signs up to the main.
Right.
But they're parking between the main entrance and the emergency room, and I believe there were signs there that were...
I thought there were signs there, but we'll double-check, we have a sign database that we can double-check, and I'll look into that with the chief.
Thank you.
Address that with the Board of Police Commissioners. If the signs aren't there, we'll address with the Board of Police Commissioners.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Actually, just a comment. I'd just like to mention that the police department, in regards to this latest shooting, unfortunately, took place in, part of it was in my ward, and ended in the third ward. As some people like to point out, well, Main Street, I don't think the people knew they were by City Hall, they drove past the police station, the firehouse, everything else, they just happened to stop there. It wasn't like they brought it to the street. The police department, whether people realize it or not, has been very active in this. Last week alone, the chief is kind enough to give me a heads-up, without revealing too much, and I keep that to myself, but I'd like to just be able to tell my residents it's in effect, or what's happening, so they don't get nervous or worried when they see the amount of police activity that's been going on. If they had any clue what they were talking about, they would have known last week, there were several actions that were taken. Again, I don't want to divulge what it is, but I can certainly tell you, the neighborhood, people that actually have lived there, that witnessed, that they've seen, they appreciate the action that is going on. It's not everybody that lives there in that neighborhood is happy with the situation either. As it might, may or may not have been pointed out, it's always the last few incidents, they don't live here. They're from out of state, they're from other towns, they're coming into our place, unfortunately, committing crimes, but under no stretch of the imagination is, you know, the police department been complacent about it, and I would just like to say thank you for everything that you've done over this.
If I might, kind of building off that comment, is it safe to say that these are not first-time offenders that are coming into our city and causing all this havoc, if you will?
We're not going to get into that part, there's still too much of that investigation to talk in detail towards that.
Prior cases that may have been below, let's just say.
Off the top of my head, I do not have that.
Because it seems like a lot of these guys, when you read a lot of the comments on folks that have been arrested, they have a rap sheet that will reach from here to the police department if you were to kick it in front of the city hall, so...
Some do.
I guess, and probably not your issue to solve this, how do we stop these repeat offenders from continuing to do this?
That's the million-dollar question. You can figure that out.
Yeah, and, and just to build off of this, our town is not unique to this problem that's happened all over the...
Unfortunately. Unfortunately... No, unfortunately, unfortunately, it is a statewide, nationwide issue. And it's something that every police department...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think there's a perception, though, that it's something that's easily solvable, that the mayor can just wave his wand and make a curve, but it's, it's not, it's not something that can happen along those lines.
No, but laws can be strengthened, giving the police a lot more authority and ability to, so there's consequences.
And even to that point, even the police presence, it was less than a quarter mile from the police department. You know, you could put double, triple the force, it's still, let's call it as it is.
Well, but, but so repeat offenders aren't out on the street, so that they're in jail where they belong.
And we do have an issue, you know, we've discussed before, you know, you, you do have some offenders that are arrested more than seventy, eighty times, and they're put right back on the street.
It's just unacceptable, it's unacceptable.
Unfortunately, the creation of a very permissive environment, and, and I do agree, there's a lot that can be done within the city, and we do believe very strongly that surveillance efforts will have an impact. We know that they've made an impact in cities such as Bridgeport, where there are cameras, shop monitoring technology. We have a much smaller city here, and we believe the return on investment could be that much more pronounced here within investment in that technology. But at the same time, we do need the state, you know, we do need the state to have our backs in eliminating that pervasive environment, permissive environment. And unfortunately, that has not been the case in the last several years.
With Mr. O'Grady's point, I don't, I don't believe the cameras are going to give us the relief that we're looking for. I think until you have a stiffer punishment.
Yes.
You know, you don't, you don't release some of these folks, you're not...
You can catch them, but if there's no penalty...
Right.
One thing is, the cameras do give us a little bit, just please something to work with, it helps build cases.
Right.
They, they are helpful.
Nothing else, it will not stop.
They are helpful.
There was an incident just before the last election. I was almost in the middle of it. I go through to my ward every single night. Many of your officers will see me. I walk through. I don't, I don't go through in a suit. I go through almost undercover, nobody pays attention. I see things that you wouldn't believe. That particular night, somebody shot out a car running down the street. There was a black and white patrol car thirty yards from him, so you could have had anybody sitting there. The next incident that happened, an officer was sitting on one side of the park. Guy on the other side decides to shoot somebody. That officer chased him down, tackled him, recovered the weapon. Again, they were right there. It's not a deterrent. If, if the person committing the crime doesn't care, we can have ten people up there, we can have cameras on every corner, we could... These things do, in the long run, they'll help make more solid case, gives us something to look at. It's, it's even a learning tool, because they don't have to be there all the time. They can review footage and see what goes on.
Right.
It won't, it's not a, there is no perfect solution.
It's a nationwide problem.
Yes, absolutely. We're seeing it. New York, a couple of weeks ago, the woman pushed an elderly woman down for no reason. You know why she was arrested, and they closed that case? A camera.
Look, no appreciation.
Otherwise, she would have just walked away and never been caught.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
For you and your department, you're asking about telegraphing, so.
Yeah.
We know there's a lot of stuff going on, right? Thank you. Any other questions? Move on to the committee reports.
Make that motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
Motion to pay all bills, deemed correct, by the moan, second by the...
Aye.
Can you oppose? Are there any other committee reports? Any other motion to accept all the reports that were in the packet?
Make that motion.
By the moan, second by all favor.
Aye.
You oppose? Our municipal reports, we start, we have two items there, and B, a vote recommendations.
Motion to accept the vote recommendations.
Motion to accept by the moan, second by Janetti. Discussion, all favor.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Item B on the municipal reports is vote recommendations, references in an update, transfer funds requested in the amount of $510,000 for purchase of Olson Drive from the Ansonia Housing Authority.
Can I ask a question on this, sir? Maybe for Rich, I don't know if you would know. For the purchase of the Olson property, do you know what line we're pulling that from temporarily?
I don't know. Maybe, maybe the line is a trajectory. Probably going to have to transfer out of reserve to accommodate.
And then transfer back, okay.
It's a pass.
It's a pass.
Okay. So can I make a motion to transfer the funds in the amount of $510,000 for the purchase of Olson Drive from the Ansonia Housing Authority with the stipulation that the funds are replaced from the line that they are pulled from?
A pending vote approval?
Yeah.
Pending approval.
Motion by Ramon, second by Rivers. Any further discussion on this? All favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? The extension. Do you know a line on that? Good, thank you. Tax collector report, and what request for refund?
I'll make the motion. I don't have the amount in front of me, though. I did look at it previously. Make a motion to approve the refunds report, request for refunds in the amount of sixteen, nine, twenty-one, eighty-seven, if deemed correct.
Motion by Ramon, second by Janetti. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extension.
Need a motion for the tax collector report as well? Make a motion to accept the tax collector report as found in the packet? Second.
Motion by Ramon, second by Rivers, all favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Accessive claims, we have four claims, sorry, five, sorry. Three, two, two, one, oh, two, five, three, two, two, one, oh, two, six, three, two, 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 seven. Three, two, two, one, oh, three. Does anyone want to get to the next one? Zero, three, two, two, one, oh, two, one.
Make a motion to refer to court counsel?
Second. By Ramon, the third corporation counsel, second by the city, all favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Communications, so communication one is Sheila O'Malley, economic development director. This is, we started to talk about this in the economic development update. This is a request for the waiver of engineering services for states here. Any further you want to add on that?
I mean, it's, it's at the pleasure of this board, it doesn't, you know. What, what I'm telling you is that they do have institutional knowledge and have been gathering survey data and so forth, so. But it's fine, whatever, whatever this board wants to do.
Motion to accept the recommendation?
Second? Motion to accept the recommendation by the city, second by not.
Point of discussion?
By the extension, Ramon?
Can we potentially amend that to get clarification if they were paid previously?
Sure.
You said you were going to check on that?
Yep, I could check.
Joe, you'll pick it up?
No, so amended.
All favor?
Aye.
So is this conditioned on whether or not they were paid previously? I think it's being required, you know.
Yes.
Well, it could be if you want, it doesn't matter. I, I...
Mine wasn't conditional, I was just, I wanted to know if they were paid previously. If we want to make it conditional, I can amend to his amendment if he desires.
I mean, I, I could support it on that basis, certainly.
Okay. So amended.
So there's a question out, an inquiry out, if they were paid for previous work already done? I'm looking at her.
I, I think, I think it would be conditioned on confirmation that the firm had been paid for, has been paid for previous work.
Yeah. We're ready.
All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? An extension?
Thank you.
All right, communication two, this is how you, this one's from me, actually. It's actually written in the communication, so take that. opposed to verbal, but are any, any...
Yes.
Communication two was, was a letter from me, actually, a short letter, and I just wanted to share this because this, as it, as it mentioned in my letter, it came from, out of the fire commission meeting just a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, we get, we get a lot of flack from different, different angles, but this was just a very positive thing, where all entities in the city were together, and I want to read this one quickly. This is from Assistant Chief Delusio of the fire. Said that, "Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to City Ball, the Board of Aldermen, the Fire Commissioners, and members of the Tax Abatement Committee, of the support of work to advise the city ordinance and increase the maximum allowable tax abatement, and committee members that accept this task seriously. We were able to come to a consensus within a relatively short amount of time. We received tremendous support from every level within City Ball, the mayor, the Board of Aldermen, and the Fire Commission, all through complete support behind this project. In doing so, show their commitment, show your commitment to our first response. I know the department, members of the department will appreciate the work that was done and the support that was received from all three best regards. And I just, I thought it was nice, you know, we voted on this at the Alderman level, but everyone was working together. This happened quickly, and it's an ongoing process, and I thank also the fire department for figuring out a lot of...
Hard work.
So a lot of hard work, and happy ending, but it's ongoing, and it'll get better, so. Communication three was from Superintendent DiBacco. It's a letter from the Ansonia Public Schools. I'm going to summarize this one, since, basically, this was his request to have us form a school building committee for the middle school, not with the talks for a regionalized school district cease. And he came to us asking that the city considers forming a school building committee for the middle school. I would recommend that we accept this as preferred.
I was going to say, does that have to go back to the mayor's office for committee, form the committee?
Accept and refer to staff, so they can appoint members in the next...
So it just gets, who is it, the mayor's office?
The mayor.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion to...
Yeah, I think that, I, I thought that he was asking the form, so if we give permission to form, it goes to...
He asked it goes to the mayor.
The mayor's office.
So the mayor, yeah, the mayor.
So accept the communication and, and refer to the mayor's office for...
Right.
Yes, here's a question. Has the school board taken action on this request?
They, we've received emails from the school board asking for consideration of some of its members.
So this has been discussed in a school board meeting, school board has voted to make this request to the...
No, they have not voted.
This came here, this came from the superintendent, so I haven't...
And I would say, I would say that we will work with mayor, and his staff will work with Superintendent DiBacco and Rich Bichera, who's the president of the Board of Education, on forming a committee collaboratively.
Yeah.
But the board has determined that this is the direction they want to go.
Is that, Rich?
Oh, that's your question.
Our president?
If I can, this has been discussed in the past, in fact, we had... Tessa Diabatza was actually here, discussed with us the possibility of, of putting in a request for this. And he basically said, while regionalization was on the table, there would be no consideration, and that we have to wait until the regionalization issue is resolved. So we wanted to do a silently, just in case, but they conferred us a... But yes, we missed our meeting last month, and we'll be discussing this, our meeting on the twentieth, I believe. The process probably takes about four years for completion, and we'll need to come before the city, the Board of Aldermen, the Board of Ed, and the public at large, to be, to at least start discussing if, if we so want to go in that direction. Something that, I guess, the board members have talked about over the time, over the, over the last couple of years.
Support of the new middle school, correct?
Yes. I mean, now, it's, there are things that we're going to need to do to the middle school in order to bring it up to a more code.
Yep.
And it just seems great spending money there.
Yeah, the cost of bringing it up is going to be ridiculous.
Yeah, it, it's up for discussion. It's not a...
Yeah, right.
Can't start talking about it when we get the committee.
Right.
Do you understand that, sir? All we're doing is accepting this letter that you wrote to the mayor and passing it back to them to start speaking with the school. I'm assuming they'll come back, you know, they should come back with a recommendation from the mayor.
If there's a determination, yeah, to open that process up, the support can vote to create the building commission. I do think that, that if that's the direction that, you know, if there's a consensus, that's the direction. I do think sooner than later is helpful.
Yeah.
Given if we're talking about site selection, right, there, there's a lot to think about. So I think the next step would be taking your, you know, recommendation, referring this to staff, and we can sit down with Superintendent DiBacco and kind of get, and Rich, and kind of get engaged on, you know, how the state can move forward.
We require that charter is specific.
Yep.
Yes.
It's three Alderman, three members of the board that came from the tax board, who are three from the general...
Oh, right.
And, and whose authority is the building committee formed? I guess that was...
The Board of Aldermen.
The sense of the question.
Mayor appoints and the board has...
But the Board of Aldermen is going to have to be the main party.
Next month or whenever, when he's going to send his recommendations. Okay, so the mayor would make a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen to form the committee. The Board of Aldermen would approve that in order to create the committee. This is simply a, a, a letter that should have gone to the mayor, will go to the mayor, in order to have that request considered. Exactly, it was a letter to the mayor, and do CC me on it, so I just consider it here as an informational thing. I just want to get back to there officially. Sorry, by lack of experience, but I...
No.
Good question.
That's a good question.
Transparency, I think, right, just an item of information. But we, we may very well have both the creation of the, of the commission and possibly even the, the... What am I trying to say? The, the approval of members, of recommendations from the mayor on membership by the next meeting.
As a committee.
Yep.
Sounds like it'd be a good method for the state.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion by Ramon, we don't have a second. Second by Janetti. Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extension? Yes. Uh, communication four, the federal reference, this is a letter from the police department and the chief, Wayne Williams. Requesting permission to dispose of the following vehicle that's currently parked in the Ansonia Police Department inventory, 2013 Ford Explorer.
Motion.
VIN number, this was a police cruiser that's been converted to animal control. Anyone want to draft this, please?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Adam Rivers, second by Ramon. Oh, yeah, do you want to amend that motion with all tires, with Janetti?
That's a given.
Yeah, that's a given.
Including the spare.
Along with...
Yes.
Chief, just leave him on his front sidewalk.
Anywhere on Racy Lane.
That's right.
Let's see, that's it for communications. Moving on, there's no reservations, and we have two resolutions. The first resolution is, this is a boilerplate resolution, Department of Economic and Development. This is essentially, if I understand correctly, to accept a million dollars in competitive grants.
Yes. Yes, two grants, one for $800,000 for remediation and demolition at 35 North Main Street, and one for $200,000 for assessment at 35 North Main Street. These were two grants that we secured.
So these resolutions, this resolution is merely to allow us to accept some...
Enter into a financial assistance... Enter into a financial assistance agreement with the state.
Motion to approve, by Rivers.
Second.
Second by Na, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Thanks, thank you, thanks, guys.
Second one is, this is the resolution for, to initiate charter revision process. I recollect as we did this recently, we didn't have comments. To comply with the statute, you have to do something within thirty days, we didn't, so this is just being safe, so this is a resolution to initiate the charter revision process.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Ramon, second by Adamowski, any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? And the appointments are later, I think. We should make that. So we have the appointments, in the mayor's letter, equal six, first category is the charter revision commission proposed by the mayor, Joe, Coleman, and Dennis.
I think promotion, we just put all the things that we're not doing.
Second.
Yes.
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah.
I don't think we can do that, I don't know.
Do you want to do them? Can you read them all off? Pull out of the mudslide?
We got to take care of that.
Yeah, that's the first thing, it's time to revisit. Yep.
Do you want to do it anyway?
Spell it.
I like this.
Not made all five.
I wish I could have made all five. Wait a second. So motion by Janetti, second by Vasquez, I'll read them quickly. Gary Farrar, Republican, Fortino Cathy Lane, Robert McDowell, Republican, ninety-four Bruad, machine Gonzalez, Democrat, one, Merrick Street, Gary Vasquez, Democrat, one oh two, who'd have, Kevin Mendoza, in attendance, sixty, Olson Drive. So we have a motion and a second, approve all these? Any issues?
I don't have an issue with that either, people, they're far from clear about words. Last time we had a problem, it was like a couple of...
Charter revision.
Charter revision, protection.
Right.
Hopefully all this will...
That's what it looks like. It looks like here, we got close parties and...
That was the benefit of the fair.
Nobody can complain about this.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension. One. One extension? One extension.
See, that's why it's supposed to go.
Okay. Yeah, I'll play.
No extension. All right. Next one, Peter Haddish, one-year term, nominee is... Last highway term expiring four one twenty-three.
Make that motion. I'll make a second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Ramon, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Extension. Okay, for us, next one is historic commission, historic district commission, five-year term, nominee Dominic Monalisa Lindgren, eighty-one print the lab, term expiring four twelve twenty-seven. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Janetti, second by Vasquez, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension. All right, and last one, zoning board of appeals, five-year term, nominee Bob Meyer Nick, Democrat, seven, Berkeley Drive, reappointment term expiring four eleven twenty-seven.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Ramon, second by Adamowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Per standing?
Is the Board of Appeals different than the Board of Appeals?
Yeah, I didn't want to put that out. The, it's just a type of...
Their hells meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Next one, we'll do the Board of Appeals again. That's it for appointments, we have nothing under coordinates. Under new business, I did start this at the beginning of the meeting, Corporation Council had requested us to vote to establish an upper house commission. Any other motion to do that?
Make that motion.
Do you need a motion to accept the new business or communication piece or not?
It is.
Does that mean?
You just bring the other new business.
Oh. Make that motion. Second.
Hey, I'm going to pitch you with Adamowski.
Oh, sorry.
So motion by Rivers, second by Ramon, all in favor?
Next one.
Oppose? Extension. All right, so now we'll pass this back to staff.
Yes.
Any other new business? All right. Old business? Yes.
I would wonder about the outcome of Derby, yes, I mean, if anyone... I don't know.
I mean, I know that Kurt has been working with folks over in Derby about trying to resolve some issues, so it's ongoing, it's ongoing.
So, so this was the larger issue with the senior sector and the...
Yes, yes. But we separated them, we put them together, we're trying to, we're trying to work out something.
Any other old business? All right, I want to read something real quickly, the update to the initiative we did two months ago, this was a message that came in, subject was road paving, thank you, and I just thought it's another thing to share with you, but this was regarding the Kimberly Lane two.
Oh, yeah.
That we accepted a few months ago as a city road, this is from one of the residents, Stella. Mike Mayer, just want to thank you so much that this was done this year, it was paved last year, it was done this year, I know it was accepted by the city, truly don't know if it's been split another year, so thank you for having, maybe, maybe impact for our families, thank you for everyone for your help and help on this, so I just wanted to share that because it's another happy ending, something that you guys acted on.
One other thing, I don't think this is done yet, right, because don't you have to change that name to continue?
The road change thing, I think it's...
Yeah, that has to be done.
They did, they did some level paving.
No, I know that, but the name of the road itself.
Correct. That part has to be...
That's right, you're right.
Or you can drive safely down the road.
Yeah, yeah, because before, man, my truck had a hard time.
Any other old business? All right, so ends the regular session.
I make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Another big session, by Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. We think it was five hundred grand.
That was the worst meeting I've ever been to.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
We didn't get any candidates.